Good evening. The February 22nd, 2022 Board Meeting is now in order. I'm happy to welcome my fellow Board members and the public. This is a business meeting of the Board held in the public. As such, the Board is authorized to adopt rules or policies to maintain orderly conduct and proper decorum in a public meeting. Please note that your presence here is subject to those rules and policies. Pursuant to Florida Statute 877.13, it is unlawful and a misdemeanor of the second degree punishable by up to 60 days in jail and a $500 fine for any person knowingly to disrupt or interfere with the lawful administration or functions of any educational institution or school board, or knowingly to advise, counsel, or instruct any school pupil or school employee to disrupt any school or school board function or activity on school board property. To facilitate Board business, please be aware of the following. If you must leave the building for any reason, you will not be permitted to reenter. Your seat will be given to the next person waiting to enter. The appropriate place for public participation in the meeting is during your individual public comment opportunity as identified in the agenda. Outside of your individual public comment opportunity, your role in the meeting is as an observer. I will ask persons deemed to be knowingly or intentionally disrupting this meeting of the School Board of Brevard County or not complying with policy to stop or leave. If persons receiving the warning choose not to follow my instructions, I will instruct Brevard County Sheriff's deputies to take any law enforcement action they deem appropriate, and you may be escorted, detained, or arrested depending on the conduct. Persons who refuse to depart after a warning may also be committing the crime of trespassing in accordance with Florida Statute Section 810.05. These statutes apply to conduct on all school board property which includes this boardroom as well as the outside of this building to the sidewalk. If you continue to cause a disruption, you are advised that you are in violation of Florida State Statute 877.13, or if you fail to leave the premises after being warned by the sheriff's office, you are committing trespass, and the Board has authorized the sheriff's office to enforce these rules. In the event multiple individuals fail to adhere to these expectations and Board business cannot continue due to disruption, I'll call a recess and request that the law enforcement officers present clear the boardroom of attendees. When the room is cleared, the Board will return and resume their meeting with no public presence. Those who are signed up to speak will be seated under the front entry area and called in when it is your time to speak. Paul, roll call please.
Ms. Belford.
Present.
Ms. McDougal.
Present.
Ms. Campbell.
Present.
Ms. Jenkins.
Present.
Mr. Susan.
Present.
The Board will now hold a moment of silent reflection and invite the audience to join. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of the richest landings, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to offer my fellow Board members and Dr. Mullins an opportunity to recognize students, staff, or members of the community who'd like to start us off today.
Let me start.
Ms. Jenkins?
Yeah, I just want to say congratulations to Satellite High School's basketball team. I hear that they are going to state. And I also want to say a big shout out and thank you to the Future Problem Solvers Competition that was held here over the last two weeks. I was able to participate with Bayside High School, West Shore Junior/Senior, and I was able to come check in on the little guys in elementary school who received their awards. Pretty incredible kiddos, really imaginative, really, really bright, and it was really, really cool to see them solve the future problems, which apparently I'm not allowed to talk about what they were solving, but it was really, really unique and interesting. So I'm really proud of them.
Thank you, Ms. Jenkins. Ms. Campbell, you look ready?
I am ready. So at our last Board meeting, I made a huge mistake, and that mistake was to include Mr. Gibbs in our 300 Mile Challenge that I put out because he is stomping us with all of his steps. So we want our... All of our employees are invited to participate in 300 Mile Challenge. We want to focus really this year on wellness, including just getting out there and exercising. So there are a few Board members who need to get on board and get their steps, but Ms. McDougal and I are duking it out for second place. So congratulations so far, Mr. Gibbs, but we still have a couple months to go, so we'll see how it goes. The music performance world is in full swing here in Brevard. A few weeks ago, we had our Jazz Band MPA, which stands for Music Performance Assessment. This is the Super Bowl of our music programs. That same weekend, we had a band solo and ensemble competition, which is for individual students or small groups of students. In the coming weeks, we'll have the Orchestra Music Performance Assessment, which is Friday. We'll have the, I think it's Thursday and Friday, we'll have the Chorus MPA next week and the Band MPA the following week. And this Saturday is our Elementary Music Festival, so all kinds of music things going on, and anybody in the public who would like to, those NPAs are open to the public, and you can ask me later for more information, or you might be able to find it on our website. The South Area Science and Engineering Fair happened. You know, we're all kind of rotating through at the Melbourne Square Mall. We had our awards last Saturday or two Saturdays ago. Got a chance to talk. It's one thing to stand there and shake hands as the kids go across the stage, but it's another to get to walk through the mall and talk to kids about their projects. And I talked to some middle schoolers, some high schoolers from several different high schools that just wandered through, and whatever piqued my interest, I asked them questions, not that the judges would ask, but... And I'm just always really impressed with the research that they do, and even the students who their project failed, for lack of a better word, you know, they weren't able to, you know, make it through. The things that they learned, they still presented it, they still shared, "This is what went wrong with my project, why it didn't work, and this is how we do it better next time." So just great reflection on the part of our students, and thousands and thousands of dollars given away at the awards program from our sponsors. I was able to go to, on the Moore Center field trip with Southwest, it's been a long week, but it was last week, and just had a really great time. All the curators there at the Moore Center were fabulous. The students really learned a lot and were exposed to some parts of our civil rights history, especially right here in Brevard, that, to be honest, kids who live in my end of the county might not have ever been exposed to because it's so far away. So it was great to get up to MEMS and see that Moore Center field trip with them, and then I know we're all going to be going at different times, so I'm looking forward to another trip with another school in a few months. This morning, and I don't want to steal all Mr. Susan's thunder, sorry, I just spent a busy month, a busy month, that's why I have so many... This morning, we had our CTE tour at Mel High, and Mr. Susan, would you stand up and show off our...
I'll get to it.
Okay, he's going to show off our awesome t-shirts.
I got unveiled during my time.
But I just wanted to thank, first of all, the teachers and students who were there ready today because they were fantastic ambassadors for our CTE programs. They did such a great job presenting the programs and representing their school and their accomplishments. I also really wanted to thank all the businesses that came to represent our community, and we got some business cards exchanged, and I'm looking forward to internships maybe that will come out of this, and partnerships, and mentoring that will come out of it as well. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Mr. Susan?
Yeah, so the Future Problem Solvers that you spoke about, when I was a teacher, we used to do the Community Problem Solvers, which was a component of it, and it was really an amazing program. So thank you so much for being a part of that and supporting those people. I do know that there is some issues going on with Future Problem Solvers, so they may need to have us help them move forward. All right, next thing is you got this 300 Mile Challenge official waiver sign up. Did you guys all sign this thing? Did you actually read this thing? Like, I'm almost afraid to do this now. It says like, you know, it says the undersigned participant assumes any risk liability for him or herself and his heirs, devices, personal representative releases, discharges. I mean, there's some serious stuff here. And then the other thing is, is that it says January 29th I was supposed to sign it by, so it's an illegal document. I'm going to have to get this over to Paul. Paul's going to have to review it for legality, and then he comes back and then I'll take a look at it. So Dr. Mullins is in the same boat as me now, right? Because you have to sign the same thing. We have to make sure this goes by legal, because I don't think, being that Cigna is our member, I'm going to have to take a look at it. So I'm just giving you an update as to my progress for joining. What are you talking about?
Mr. Susan, I feel very comfortable with my own personal health. I'll take on the challenge.
It says down here, BPS recommends that you consult with your physician before beginning any of this exercise regime. I haven't seen a doctor in 10 years, so how am I, when I have to go find with them? I have to find this. I'm going to try to get there, but we'll see how it works out.
You're not on our health plan though, are you?
I am, you better look out. All right, next thing is, I want to say thank you to Manatee Elementary. Went by there yesterday, and they had a great job. That school is absolutely one of our best schools, well-run by Ms. Daly. You know, there's a lot of really good things. With the Viera Middle School now starting to get moving, we have all of those students that are going to start moving up into those, from those programs. So it's a good, exciting time to be an elementary school in the Viera Suntry area because they're all going to start funneling into our new middle school that's coming up. It's going to be phenomenal, so thank you to them, and I'm looking forward to Viera High tomorrow. I'll be working with their, or speaking at their faculty meeting and moving around there. I did do the challenge. Viera High School Boys, Ms. Jenkins mentioned the Satellite Team, so the Viera High School Boys, for the first time, are in the state playoffs inland on Monday. So we have our state championship, so we're going to be playing there. Did you have that down in your paper? I didn't, I didn't steal it from you. And then I did want to say, the CTE tours has been amazing. So it's out of my district now, so the baton's been passed. I'll find something to hand you guys off. And then what happens is, is just so everybody knows it's inside here, a lot of people think that we needed to create trades, but Dr. Mullins will tell you, we've had trades. So today, we went, we've been going through each one of the schools and showing off all of the trades. Well, today, we were at Melbourne High School, and they got to see the construction program, they got to see the cybersecurity program, the nursing program, there's just a phenomenal amount of programs there, and we had the Associated Builders and Contractors there. We had the Home Builders and Contractors there. We had a cybersecurity company there. We had employee, I mean, we had a lot of business partners that are starting to come, so it's starting to pick up. So when it gets to y'all's districts, it's going to be really cool. And they just came out with this new shirt, just so you guys know. Can you get me here? Can you zoom in on my shirt right here? See if you can do it. No? There it is. All right, so this was put together by Russell Brune. He was using Russell Cheatham's green from the inside of the room over there, and this right here is the CTE tour. And then just so in case anybody wants to go to a school, they actually put all this stuff on the back. So you got that? Can you read that, Mullins? Can you see that? All right, good. All right, I just wanted to make sure everybody's got it. This is the new fangled, literally off the press today, really exciting stuff, showing off our trades inside the school district. What we need, more than anything, is help getting our kids motivated to get to work. So thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Susan. Ms. McDougal, I'm going to you in just one second. Ma'am, with the sign in the front, we have a sign policy that requires it to be lower than your head, so you're not blocking the people in front of you. If you would please lower it for me. Thank you. Ms. McDougal?
Thank you. Two things. I want to give a shout out to which Ms. Campbell did last Board meeting, to Antonia Cipio. I gave her an Impact Elevated pin. She has really been a star in our HR department with benefits, risk management, and all the health plans that she's been working on, and she is behind some of the wonderful things that we're doing to help the health of our employees here at Brevard Public Schools. So a big shout out to Antonio Cipio, so I want to thank her. And today, I was able to go to Cocoa Beach Junior/Senior High School, and you guys missed it. Book it and bake it. So it was phenomenal. What it is, is that the students read a particular book, and then they made a cake. It wasn't store-bought, they made it, and these cakes were absolutely phenomenal. We had Romeo and Juliet, we had Hitchhiker's Guide to the Galaxy, somebody did a statistics book. It was just the creativity of our students, and I was just going to take a look, but I ended up being one of the judges, and it was very hard to make the decision. So I'm curious to see who won overall. I'm thinking that Dr. Rendell's going to put some pictures on their Facebook page, and I don't know if Mr. Brune's going to do any or not, but anyhow, it was really pretty phenomenal. Oh, good. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. McDougal. Dr. Mullins?
Thank you, Ms. Belford. I just want to piggyback on the science fair recognition. Our students are absolutely phenomenal. I'm going to, but just add to the recognition, our business partners, our community partners out there, they come alongside our aspiring young scientists, and they inspire them to achieve and succeed in their experiments and the fortitude and the tenacity that they need. Our business partner sponsors included Collins Aerospace, L3 Harris. They contributed over $12,000 to science research this year. The funds were used toward the cost of running the three fairs and towards student monetary awards, and then additional community partners contributed over $12,500 for special monetary awards for students at each of the fairs that included the American Association of University Women, Melbourne Chapter, American Institute of Aeronautics, and Astronautics, Bayside Engineering and Technical Technology Academy, Collins Aerospace, Florida Association of Science Teachers, Harris Interstill Amateur Radio, Institute of Electrical and Electronics Engineers, South Brevard, Justin Lauer, L3 Harris again, Mainstream Engineering, Perseverance Command Success, an individual sponsor, Platinum Coast Amateur Radio Society, Sutherland Consulting, Women in Defense, Space Coast Chapter, and our very own Florida Tech offered or provided students almost $2.3 million of scholarships over four years to attend Florida Tech. So 78 projects are moving on to the state level. If our kids perform anything like they have in the past historically, we have less than 3% of the students in Florida, but we historically bring home over 30% of the first-place awards at the state science fair. We've got students going on already qualified for ISF, International Science Engineering Fair. Our science teachers, our science research teachers across our great county just continue to pour into our kids, and they are led by our science fair directors, Maggie Molito from Satellite, Chelsea George from O'Gally, Jeffrey Higginbotham from Rockledge, Debbie Austin, Satellite High, Lauren Kingsley, Satellite High, and Ellen Muse from Palm Bay Magnet High School. Just, we can't express our appreciation enough to our community who stand in the gap for our kids, and our teachers who continually inspire our kids to produce results across the state and the world at international fair. And last, just an invitation to our community this Saturday. I don't think Ms. Campbell mentioned it, but our Elementary Music Fest, did you already mention it?
Sorry.
All right, so our concerts are this Saturday at the King Center. South and Central Concert is at 12:30, and our North Central Concert is at 7:00. I just got to sing the praises of everything we provide for our kids, from science research opportunities to music festivals at the King Center Performing Arts Center. It's just phenomenal what opportunities our kids have available. You heard about CTE. It's just a great day to be a student in Brevard Public Schools, and we thank our great teachers across our district for helping make that possible and the support we get from our community. So thanks, Ms. Belford. I know that was a lot.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins, and I, I'm going to be in the same boat as Ms. Campbell mentioned. It's been, it's been a busy couple of weeks with a lot going on, so I will go as quickly as I can. First, want to give a shout out to Danielle McKinnon, who was our Director of Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion, who was a finalist for the four under 40 through Lee Brevard. She did not, she was not one of the four that were the final finalists, but she was in the semifinalist group, and got to have, spend a great evening with her and her family and her daughter, her sister, her parents, and it was, it was a really nice event. So thank you to Lee Brevard for recognition of Dr. McKinnon. Also, a thank you to Ms. Campbell for her service on the Children's Hunger Project. Most of us have the opportunity to attend the Children's Hunger Project luncheon, and if you're not aware, the Children's Hunger Project does goodness so much for our kids in this district, providing food for them to take home on the weekend, additional food throughout whenever we have holidays and breaks from school and that sort of thing. So thank you, Ms. Campbell, for your continued service on that board and all the work you do. Dr. Mullins and I had an awesome opportunity to join Viera High School, Rockledge High School, O'Gally High School, and Space Coast Junior/Senior High School at Space Coast for their first CTE rally, and I want to give a huge shout out to Junior Achievement for their support of the program. But what it was, was the kickoff to our entrepreneurial programs at those four schools, and so they brought together teams of students from each of those four schools to start to talk about the entrepreneurial process and what they can do. And they are all very excited to be developing their own businesses at their schools and working through that process. So thanks to Jay for all they do for our students as well. Also need to give a huge shout out, and I apologize, Ms. Campbell, I think this one's yours, but West Shore Junior/Senior, we, after the Space Force event at Space Coast Junior/Senior High School, we were connected with the Space Force representatives, who shared with us that the West Shore Cyber Patriot team took first in the state, out of 75 schools in the state, and it was their first year competing in the Cyber Patriot program. So congrats to the West Shore students, and absolute thanks to Mrs. Whitaker, who is their sponsor at the school and has done much to support them, and I promise I'm almost done. The last one, I just have to give a huge thank you to the Titusville Chamber of Commerce. Dr. Mullins and I had the opportunity to attend their, I always mix it up with our PI program, but it's Partners in the Business of Education Luncheon, and every year, the Titusville Chamber gives our schools an opportunity to recognize three of their business partners, and they do a nice lunch, and they give them plaques, and they get to sit at a table with their principals and usually some staff from the school, as well as the individual business partners to be recognized for all that they do to support our schools throughout the year. So we are absolutely blessed with, I think that was right there, four organizations that have wrapped their arms around our schools, so we are very thankful for all of that support. And with that, yeah, Ms. Jenkins?
So I just want to give one more shout out. I never do this, so sorry. But I just want to give a shout out as well to Dr. Danielle McKinnon for our historically Black College and Universities Night, but an even bigger shout out to our community because they really came together to pull that event off with her. And we had alumni from all over Brevard representing those colleges that they went to at tables to interact with our students, educate them on the courses they're going to need to take at high school, financial aid, a really cool app for them to kind of consolidate their costs for application processes. It was amazing. It was a full-packed house, and again, a huge shout out to the families for showing up and being here, because I don't know any other event I've ever been to with BPS where that many families showed up and participated. It was absolutely awesome to be a part of, and I was really grateful to be there, and just such a huge, huge show of the love of our community coming together for one another. So thank you to everybody.
Thank you, Ms. Jenkins. I meant to mention that, and Dr. Mullins gave us some perspective. Initially, when Dr. McKinnon was reaching out to the colleges for that event, just because of scheduling issue, most of them were not going to be able to participate, but started reaching out through alumni, and my goodness, our community really, really showed up and took care of things. So thank you for not allowing us to forget that.
Are we concerned about our cybersecurity being so good, like the other side of it? Like...
Like, are we teaching our students to hack us? Is that what you're worried about?
Just a little thought process here. Might have to have some sort of disclaimers or NDAs on these kids, because we met with ours today over in Melbourne, and they were phenomenal too, so.
Yeah.
And their teacher was probably the most well-versed that we've seen transitioning through. I mean, he knew every elected official, he knew all of the district staff, he called everybody out by name, it was pretty phenomenal. So we got some good people in there.
Yeah, we just, we just need to hire our students for our ET department, Mr. Susan, so.
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah, that's the goal, right?
Couple of them.
All right, that's going to move us along to the adoption of the agenda. Dr. Mullins?
Ms. Belford and members of the Board, on this evening's agenda, we have administrative staff recommendations, one proclamation, one presentation, 19 consent items, and two action items. Changes made to the agenda since it was released to the public are as follows. Additions included F8, Kindness Day Proclamation, F12, Expulsions, F19, approved the agreement between Brevard Public Schools and the International Union of Painters and Allied Trades, Local 1010 for the 2021/22 school year, and F20, one-time premium payment of one-time longevity payment for eligible non-bargaining personnel. The presentation on Board Master Program was deleted, and a revision was made to Items A7 Administrative Staff Recommendation.
During your motion?
Second.
Moved by Ms. McDougal, seconded by Ms. Jenkins. Is there any discussion? I will just quickly share with the Board before I call the vote. We were supposed to have our presentation of our plaque for Master Board Training this evening, but Tina, who was supposed to do the presenting, fell ill, and so she'll be rescheduling that, just so you guys are aware of what's going on. I don't know if you were copied in, but... All right, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0. Dr. Mullins, will you please let us know about the administrative staff recommendations?
Yes, Madam Chair and members of the Board, there are four items for your consideration.
What are the wishes of the Board? Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. Campbell. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0. Dr. Mullins, will you please let us know about tonight's proclamation?
Yes, I am happy to. The Board is certainly no stranger to Brevard Public Schools' adoption of the kindness symbol that was brought to us by our Tropical Elementary School kindergarten class that has now gone national. But this evening, there is an item for the Board to proclaim, February 25th, 2022, as Brevard Public Schools' Kindness Day. Mr. Brune will read the proclamation for it. Dr. Brune?
Good evening, Board. Dr. Mullins? Brevard Public Schools' Kindness Day Proclamation. Whereas there is a, excuse me, whereas there's a symbol of peace, love, and happiness, and whereas there is a need in our schools, our communities, our nation, and our world for more kindness, and whereas the Transitional Kindergarten Class, referred to as Tropical Kingdom Class, from Tropical Elementary, Merritt Island, Florida, believe that helping others become aware of kindness will generate more compassion, and whereas the Tropical Kingdom Class held a vote to choose a kindness symbol, and whereas people from 25 states, as well as England and Ireland, voted and chose the kindness all-around symbol as the official symbol of kindness, and whereas at its February 26, 2019 meeting, the School Board of Brevard County approved the kindness all-around symbol as the official symbol of kindness for Brevard Public Schools, be it resolved that the Brevard Public School Board does hereby proclaim February 25th, 2022 as BPS Kindness Day.
Thank you, Mr. Brune. What are the wishes of the Board?
Moved to approve.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. Campbell. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0. Thanks all. All right, next on the agenda is the Superintendent's Report on Progress Monitoring, Scholar Designations, and Graduation Rate Update. Dr. Mullins?
Thank you, Mrs. Belford, and members of the Board. As you know, I come before the Board and our community just to keep you apprised of some of the things that are going on across our district, and thought it was appropriate as we tackled this school year, anticipating needing to really focus our time, our energy, and priorities on progress monitoring, understanding some of the learning gaps that our students would start this school year with, but also what are the tools we're using to overcome those. And I'll remind the Board that back in October, we had a workshop where our, my staff from Leading and Learning presented not only what our plan was moving forward, our school improvement priorities, but also lots of instructional toolkits and processes our school leaders and our teachers were employing and implementing to tackle some of the learning challenges we had coming through and out of the pandemic. So this evening, just wanted to give the Board an update on some of the work that they have been doing, some of the results, or what the feedback is telling us about our progress monitoring tools. We administered a iReady progress monitoring in the fall. You can see in this slide the breakdown of students, where they fell when they kind of walked into our doors early in the school year in terms of on-grade level readiness and those percentage of students who were falling below grade level. And then again, in the winter, December, January, we administered kind of a mid-year progress monitoring assessment, and you can see we've made considerable progress in reading in the work that our kids have been engaged in and the great work of our teachers to help our students move along. You know that we disaggregate, disaggregate, disaggregate our data. We break it down every way possible from, this is all aggregated data, but we break it down by grade level and by school, and all the way down to the teacher and the, and the actual student. And we know how our students are progressing individually. Our teachers do an amazing job through data chats to then make some adjustments to their instructional practice to meet the specific needs of our kids. Here you can see a district-wide breakdown by grade level from the previous slide over the last three years, and as if you look over time, over the last three years, you can see that we're beginning to make the same kind of progress or be in a similar place that we were really pre-pandemic, which is very encouraging. There's obviously still some... There's obviously still some areas that are of concern, particularly first grade, where we see a significant percentage of our students still demonstrating one grade level below. Good news is, this is the mid-year assessment, and our teachers remain so committed and vigilant in working with our kids to help them make the progress they need by the time they finish first, in this case, first grade or grade level, or when they take the Florida Standards Assessment in the, in the late spring. Also, fifth grade, we see some, some areas that we are focusing on and really honing in to meet our kids' needs. Here you'll see aggregated data again by tier. Tier one would be those students who, at this assessment, are showing to be mid-on-grade level or above. So, again, good percentage in relation to previous years. Tier two are those students who would be early-on grade level or potentially one grade level below. Again, pretty proportional to where we have been in the past. And then also tier three, those students who are two or three grade levels below. And obviously, those are students that we are engaging with intense interventions, and our teachers are working really, really diligently with our kids who have some of those significant achievement gaps. Here you see our elementary aggregated data in the, in the area of math. You can see we've made considerable progress from the beginning of the year to our mid-year assessment on the mid-on-grade level or above, moving from 9% to 20%. But as you look at the breakdown of by grade level over time, we are, you know, in some respects, not completely surprised by the progress that, or in some cases, not as much progress as we would have liked to have made in mathematics, because the reality is, is there are many skill gaps that build upon each other in math that we've got to work toward. And that is why our schools are very focused on learning acceleration and not just remaining in, on the deficient skills, but moving them along. And again, working toward those different tiered levels of instruction. Here, tier one, pretty commensurate with where we have been in the past. Tier two as well, but tier three, a little higher than we would want it to be. Those students who are demonstrating two or three grade levels below in mathematics. So, again, we have our kids in intense interventions while in a pull-out, walk-to-intervention model, but also staying focused with on-grade level learning in their regular math class. So, here we move on to our secondary reading progress monitoring results. And you can see some, some modest improvement in those areas. Of course, you want the green area percentages to be going up and the orange and yellow percentage areas to be going down as we have kids who, in the first assessment, may have demonstrated one or two grade levels below, moving up into on-grade level and above-grade level kids. More of them moving into that above-grade level. So, we've had some, we've had some good growth. I will mention that although this is, this is seventh through 12th grade aggregated data, but it does disproportionately assess students who are on their reading assessment through 10th grade. So, you know, we assess through 10th grade, but there are some students who remain unsuccessful in 10th, and we continue to work with them into 11th and 12th. You'll see that here in this next slide, that we make considerable growth in those, those early grade levels. But 11th and 12th, those are our most struggling students in the areas of reading. So, we're, we're working with them diligently, but not as much of growth in that advanced percentage area because they're needing those additional interventions, and we're working with them. Like I said, we disaggregate all of our data, and here we have broken it down by ethnicity. That shows the same progress from fall to winter. And you could see that we've got, we've, we've got work to do with our kids across different ethnic groups as we have in the past. And we're continuing to focus on the progress we need to provide, or the interventions we need to provide them and the supports. The, the great news is, across all of our kids, the ESER or federal dollars in response to the pandemic and learning loss have been instrumental in providing additional supports, assistance, instructional opportunities, tutoring within and outside of the school day. And we are leveraging those dollars for the benefit of all of our kids. Here we have our secondary NWEA or Math Progress Monitoring. Math 6+, that's essentially middle-school math, Math 2 Advanced, Math 2, Math 2 Advanced, Math 3, Math 3 Advanced. But we also offer Algebra 1 and Geometry in our middle school. So, you, you see that there is considerable growth in our seventh and eighth-grade Algebra and Geometry students. Those are our most math-proficient kids and making great growth there. And, and, but ultimately, considerable growth across all of our grade levels in the areas of math, algebra, and geometry. Also here, we break it down by ethnicity to make sure we know exactly how our kids are doing across all groups and subgroups, particularly as we have to report all of these to the state. So, we break it down, and our schools dive into the results. Again, at the secondary level, all of our data is disaggregated all the way down to the student level, whether it's by grade, by teacher, and then ultimately down to the student. And we work with our kids to identify interventions to help them continually be successful as they approach the end-of-course exam or the FSA math exam that they take towards the end of the year. So, in terms of progress monitoring, we've talked a lot about that as a school district. Ultimately, the state has required progress monitoring as part of our instructional continuity plan for the last two years. We've had to submit that to the state. In fact, the state has embraced the progress monitoring model that it is now becoming a tool of consideration for our statewide assessments in the future moving forward. So, next year will be a, kind of a gap year in terms of a assessment year as we move towards assessing all of the new standards. And then they'll be implementing the new model of progress monitoring more formally across the state. We still don't have all of the information of what that's going to look like, so we're waiting to see what, what that ends up being. But the reality is, is we've been doing it for two years. And even before that, as Brevard has been utilizing progress monitoring to help us identify and respond to any learning needs our kids may have. So, certainly a very familiar and effective model in meeting the needs of students. Now, I want to move into our state-designated exemplar programs and some pretty amazing accomplishments of our students, again, in these areas. It's a little, it's just so impressive to see the tenacity, the fortitude of our kids, but also the dedication of our teachers, the hard work of our teachers to help our kids remain focused on pursuing these opportunities for them. So, Scholar's Diploma, it takes the high school diploma to the next level and requires credits earned in certain areas of math and science and world language as well, and/or AP, IB, ACE, and so on. We, in 2000, school year 2020, we had almost 950 students earn that designation. Last year, that increased almost 100. But stay tuned, there's a really impressive, even more impressive slide coming in a second. Here we have our Merit Diplomas. These are students who earn not only their high school diploma, but also any one of 82 industry certifications. We talked a lot about our Career and Technical Education tours and the opportunities available for our students across the district. They sit for industry certifications. You might ask, which ones? Well, here's a, here's a sample of just some of the 82 industry certs that our kids can sit for and earn. In fact, we had a, we was bragging, there's a Palm Bay High graduate last year who, by the time he finished the summer, he had, he had earned 19 industry certifications on the day of graduation and got the results of two more after graduation. So, he actually earned 21 industry certifications while in high school. That's pretty awesome. But again, you can see a little bit of a modest decline in the number of students who only earned the Merit Diploma designation. But wait. This is students who earned both the Scholar designation and the Merit designation. It went up, and these are not duplicated students. So, you go back to the Scholar Diplomas, those are unique kids, to the Merit Diplomas, and now to our Scholar and Merit credentialed kids who earn both, went up in, in a year that probably was one of the most difficult academic-pursuing years our kids have ever experienced. So, again, tremendous amount of work on behalf of our teachers, our guidance counselors, our administrators to keep kids focused in pursuing these very challenging but beneficial designations while they're in high school.
Dr. Mullins, could you do me a favor and just go? I just want to get those numbers again, because I'm going to have a question for you at the end on those.
So, there's the Scholarship Diplomas.
Thank you.
There's our Merit. And here's the number of students who earned both. And it's well over, I mean, what was that? It's probably well over 4,000 of our students, and we graduate approximately 5,000 students a year.
You read my mind. That was going to be my question. Not like, can we frame that as to how many of our students are falling into that? That's phenomenal.
It is. Four, four-fifths of our kids, or 80% of our kids, leaving high school with a designation. And then we have students who can earn the Gold Seal of Biliteracy. And the biliteracy designation is an asset-based model as students who are belligerent are tested and assessed on their listening, speaking, and reading skills in two languages. So, students can earn this by either earning four world language credits with a cumulative GPA of 3.0 or higher. They achieve a four or five on a world language assessment. Or our students who may already come to us bilingual can take assessments that measure their proficiency in listening, speaking, and reading. In fact, we had a student come to us last year who was bilingual in Hungarian. And we found the assessment to give him the, the test, and he earned the Gold Seal of Biliteracy as an English-speaking, Hungarian-speaking student. So, we, we certainly elevate our kids and their biliteracy skills and want them to earn that designation. And then, of course, we have our Cambridge programs. We saw a little bit of a modest decline in the number of students who earned the, the actual Cambridge diploma. Keep in mind, that does not reflect the numbers of courses that students completed and even earned credit for in the Cambridge program. These are actually diploma earners. These students, when they receive their Cambridge diploma, become 100% qualifiers of Bright Futures Scholarship moving forward. The same thing for our International Baccalaureate Diplomas. Little bit of a decline there in the number of students who earn the diploma. Again, they earn 100% Bright Futures Scholarship upon graduation. And then we have our AP Capstone Diploma Program. So, schools that don't have ACE or IB have the AP Diploma Program. Very rigorous. Students have to complete certain AP courses. They have to earn a, a score of three or higher in four additional AP courses in addition to AP Seminar and AP Research. The interesting thing is, again, a increasingly rigorous diploma designation, but our state does not recognize AP Capstone Diplomas as 100% Bright Futures Scholarship qualifying, yet. We're working on it. We're working on it. We're talking to our delegates. It was, it was up for discussion last session. It got some attention and movement, but it didn't make it to the finish line. But we are continuing to pursue that for our kids, because we believe that our AP Capstone Diploma recipients should earn that designation as well. This is a very exciting slide as well. When you look at the number, the, the bar at the top represents only our students who earned an AA degree at Eastern Florida State College at graduation. We, we continue to graduate more than 400 of our seniors with an AA degree. But look at how many students we have participating in a dual enrollment course throughout their, their high, the high school year. Over 5,000 students participate in dual enrollment. We know by research that when students have free, I should say, during high school, experience, exposure, and success in a college environment course, that their trajectory for college completion is increased greatly. So, we love that our Eastern Florida State College partners want and welcome us to have our students have that experience and opportunity. And it certainly is a tremendous benefit and asset for our students. And then finally, our graduation rate. We did see just a little bit of a, a increase again in our graduate, graduation rate district-wide from 2020 to 2021. Very proud of that, as I believe we are on our fifth consecutive year of increased graduation rate. And as always, we break it down by our different subgroups. And we are continuing to see some, some modest increases in, in many subgroups, some slight declines in others. But you can see that we, we, we break our data down to the, to the finite level and work to evaluate how we're serving our students, how we can serve them better, and then help them continually succeed and achieve their dreams. So, I think that is it. If the board has any questions, happy to entertain them or yield back to the boardship.
Anywhere members have any questions or comments for Dr. Mullins? Ms. Campbell?
I would just say, you know, that we're, obviously, we're not going to sit back and relax because there's no sitting back and relax, and we know our students have lost so much over the last few years. But recognizing that even in the declines, we had a, we had a smaller enrollment last year for our secondary programs, and so, and then considering all the disruptions of this year, when I look at the progress monitoring from the fall to the winter, considering how many days many students missed because of the massive quarantines that we had in the first part of the year, I think it's, it definitely shows great work of our students and by our teachers and all the coaches that come around them, and leadership for continuing to support. It's, you know, I hate that we're going to have in the future always these years with the asterisk next to them, but everybody else in the country is dealing with the same thing, and I think BPS is doing a great job dealing with it.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Couldn't agree with you more.
Anybody else?
I will just echo the sentiments of Ms. Campbell. I know, you know, when we looked at this data earlier, we, I think all of us had a little bit of heaviness in, in seeing where our kids were starting off this school year. And to see the progress that has been made this year is absolutely phenomenal. And it is, it is absolutely because of the effort of every single one of our team members, from you, Dr. Mullins, and your leadership, to our, our folks on Cabinet and the way that we have focused on, you know, across the board on our priority schools and really getting the effort in there and working from every department, focusing on priority schools. And leadership in each one of our departments emphasizing that and really making sure that the entire teams are focused on it. And then absolutely down to all of the folks at the school level who are, I mean, I know that we have folks that are digging in and helping these students that are not necessarily classroom teachers. And in a year when we have had so many challenges with having classrooms covered, when our, you know, we're combining classrooms, we have teachers covering other classes, we have instructional assistants helping with classes. And it is, it is incredibly clear from this data that they are, everyone is pitching in and making a difference in the lives of our kids. So, thank you, and to our entire team. This is great news.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. Then we are going to be coming to our public comment portion of the meeting on our agenda items. Just as a reminder, we now differentiate those speaking to an agenda item and those speaking to a non-agenda item. So, we have four speakers speaking to our agenda items this evening. We will hear them, we'll finish the board business, and then we will come back to the remainder of the speakers at the end. So, everyone will have an opportunity to speak. Since we only have four each, each speaker on our agenda items, we'll receive three minutes. Please note that the time is per speaker, not per agenda item. Topics not specific to agenda items, as said, will be moved to the end. Topics not specific to agenda items, as said, will be moved to the end. We do have a clock in front of me to help you keep track of your time. When your time is over, you'll be asked to stop and allow the next speaker his or her turn. Always keep in mind that reasonable decorum is expected and your statement should be directed to the board chair. The chair may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement when time is up. It's personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Should an individual not observe proper etiquette, the chair may request the individual to leave the meeting. I will call, I'm just going to go ahead and call our four speakers up if you guys don't mind getting on deck. And for those of you that don't join us regularly, please keep in mind, we're going to ask that you hold your applause or response to the speakers. They have their three minutes to speak, the rest of us are just observers in the process, okay? I don't know, big question, Ms. Campbell, let me check. Dolores, are you speaking tonight? Where did I see Dolores? Are you speaking tonight? Did you sign up on the? Okay. So are we, give me just one second to see if we are scheduled to take the count on the... It's on consent, okay. So Dolores, I'll call you up right after our four public comment speakers, okay? So we can get that done. All right, our speaking order is Sarah Merzke, Katie Delaney, Anthony Clucci, Mark Rainey, and then Dolores Varney. Sarah?
Just making sure I can see the clock, okay. Good evening, Madam Chair and Board. I am Sarah Merzke, wife, mother, taxpayer, stakeholder, and I'm in District Two for School Board. Tonight, I'll be speaking on Agenda Items F-14 and F-17. Just want to make a note, it's not fair that those of us who came to speak on Agenda Items, that there are last-minute changes to the agenda because we really come prepared specifically for Agenda Items and then when they get changed around, then it's, we're out of our three minutes for that. So F-14 is your financial report from the Asset Management Company for self-insurance, health insurance for your employees. There are reports from various prestigious financial companies such as Goldman Sachs, JB, and JP Morgan, to name a few. They reported on economic indicators and hyperinflation. I have spoken to this board on hyperinflation in the past. The reason why families are, some families are struggling with prices of the gas, with gas at the gas pump and grocery stores is the significant amount of SR funding our school district has received. I'm asking for more transparency with the expenditure of our tax money. The taxpayers of Brevard deserve more transparency from the school board and stakeholders as well as a whole, as each board member is a fiduciary. F-17. With being fiduciaries, I hope the board allocated our tax money to our bus drivers effectively. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Delaney?
Good evening. I'm here to speak on D-19 about the graduation rates. So we've talked about the achievement gap quite a bit, and it came to my attention recently that, and this is coming straight from a teacher, that children are being passed through math classes and which Dr. Mullins' slideshow just showed us, there's major issues with what's going on in the subject of math in Brevard County, which is sort of ironic because we have rockets being built down the street and, you know, it's really unfortunate. I'm also being told that math classes are being removed from the high school, the lower-level math classes. How, my question is, how are students supposed to go through Algebra I, Algebra II, Geometry, Calculus if they can't add fractions, if they don't know their multiplication tables? And this translates right to our graduation rates. Are our children being passed through so that our graduation rates look better than what they should be? How is this serving our children with excellence? How is this preparing them for their future? How is this preparing them for college? How is this preparing them for their vocational schools and building these rockets that are being built right down the street? We really need to do better on this and I am here to help in any capacity with that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Delaney. If you would please provide to me the specific students and the specific courses that you are referencing, if you can just send them to me via email so we can follow up, okay? Thanks. Anthony Clucci.
My name is Anthony Clucci. I'm the President of the Brevard Federation of Teachers. As we consider appointments and resignations, I want to note that this week is Public Schools Week. Let's take a moment to celebrate the promise and purpose of public schools in America. Let's celebrate the students who learn in them, the people who work in them, and the entire education community that supports preparing our next generation for college, career, civic participation, and most importantly, their lives. As this board considers the ebb and flow of hiring teachers and teachers resigning, I want to reiterate that BPS needs to focus on both recruitment and retention of teachers. In order to attract and retain employees, the board really needs to consider reshaping the district's culture. A big component of the district culture that needs to change centers on trust. The district must trust that teachers are professionals and will do their jobs and do them well. If that belief permeated the district, I'm sure there would be fewer teachers leaving for other professions. A perfect example of the district's lack of trust can be seen in the disagreement we just had over using comp time yesterday. Fortunately, we were able to come to an agreement. However, if BPS started from the point that teachers know whether or not they needed professional development to improve their practice, needed the in-service credit to renew their certificates, or simply needed a mental health day, it wouldn't have been an issue. If BPS is going to be a competitive workforce, it's past time for a change. There's no reason why our teachers are being required to stay on campus after students leave. You must trust that our teachers will have their work done regardless of where and when they do it. Other employees already operate under that belief. The upcoming March 11th Day is a plan at school day. Why, other than a lack of trust, must they plan at school? And look, you don't have to personally agree with these things. Whereas I still wear a tie every day to work, I understand that many younger than me think that's a ridiculous action. At some point, you too must realize that regardless of your personal views, the rigidity of the factory system is no longer what the modern workforce wants and is choosing. Lastly, I want to be clear that my goal by the end of the school year will be to have the 22, 23 contract ratified. Having a contract ratified with significant raises to start in August will be a great tool for recruitment and retention next year. My request of the board is to work with the superintendent to ensure that goal is achieved. I request that you actively engage in the process prior to staff taking control over it. Thank you, and as always, feel free to reach out to me.
Thanks, Mr. Clucci. Mr. Rainey?
My name is Mark Rainey. I've come before you last three or four times. I represent the bus drivers that are not in the union. That's 260 bus drivers, two-thirds of them are not in the union. Today, you have a chance to look at the 10-10 contract. And although the bus drivers voted no on the, a large portion of the bus drivers voted no on that contract, they do respect their colleagues and the union and will ask that you support the 10-10 contract. With that being said, the contract fails in its resolve of solving the root cause problem of why we can't get drivers in this county. It does not address reoccurring starting wages of drivers. You're fixing to have a fair on March the 9th and you're not going to get anybody because your rates are too low. And that's a reflection of your leadership. You have a chance to make a difference. You can help, you can do whatever mechanism it is. We would ask that you pass this contract and then solve the root cause problem, which is add $2 to the hiring wage of the drivers. Go after those drivers. Let us help you recruit those drivers. We know what questions they're going to ask, but we can't solve that $14.06 driving starting wage of the drivers. Now, we do appreciate what you've given in this contract and we thank you for it. And we thank the union for doing their job, okay? But we are small. We're 260 out of 2,700 potential people, right, that vote in this thing. You have a leadership responsibility and that leadership responsibility needs to be lead, to lead, not follow. Every county in this state is having a problem with this issue. You're, you're one of the largest counties in providing these kinds of services. Step forward and lead. Take a chance. Give a recurring rate to solve this problem. And you don't even have to do it this year. The drivers will understand. If you want to push it off to 2023 like you did the food services people in this contract, which is a recurring rate increase, do so. I mean, we are greatly appreciative of the food service people and we encourage that you give and pass that contract for them. But take a chance and get ahead of this game before it gets too late. My concern is, you mentioned the MPA. We don't have enough drivers to do the events. We got supervisors driving the buses today. So many, it's not a requirement. We don't have to take them. It's on our time, it's in our split shift. We just ask that you meet us. Take leadership and meet us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rainey. Dolores?
Can you hear me? I can. Usually, you cannot. Good evening, Ms. Belford and board members. My name is Dolores Varney and I am the Business Representative for Brevard Public School Support Staff, Local 10-10 Union. As you know, we just had our contract voted on and the count was 808 yes, 225 no, and four voids. We had a total of 1,037 employees that voted this year. For years, it's only been like 15% of employees even got out and voted. And this year, we had around 37%. We are so happy with the improvement in the employee turnout. And if I could say a thank you to them, am I allowed to do that since I really wasn't signed up for comment? We would like to take a minute to thank every employee who came out and voted this year. By coming out to vote, no matter if your vote was yes or no, you took the time to voice and speak to what matters to you. And also, we would like to tell the support staff that there was a lot of attention on the contract this year, excuse me, our processes and how we get to the tentative agreement. So we encourage and welcome those who are really interested to get involved in your local 10-10 union, be active, and learn the process. And this is something that came to us and was conveyed and communicated to us a lot during this, is that the employees want the district to prioritize annual reoccurring raises at the first budget line item for all employees. And, you know, they need to keep, you guys need to keep this up. They said the momentum to make sure that this is prioritized and it's a priority that's set that every year that it's the first line item. You look at the, you know, taking care of your folks. And by accepting this language this year, we are not sending a message that we just want bonuses because we are, as Mr. Rainey said, we also established a raise for the food service staff for the following year. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dolores. And as you're, I, it may not be appropriate, Paul, wave at me if I'm saying something I shouldn't, but I just wanted to share with you, Dolores, when we were out at schools last week, one of the things that came up, and I don't know how we can address it, was that perhaps we would have a higher percentage of participation if we, if people didn't have to travel to like an individual location, if there was some way that we could work it in so that our school-based folks could actually vote at school. So just throwing that out you, I, you know, I think the more participation we get, the better. It's more representative, so just share on the recommendation. Yeah. So if you would give me a call, we can talk about that more, okay? Thanks, Dolores. So that concludes our agenda-based speakers. Dr. Mullins, I believe you wanted to address something.
Yeah, I just wanted to respond or assure the board that our graduation rate is not only state-moderated, but it is federally moderated. It's the federal grad rate. It has specific graduation requirements that have to be met and we are held accountable to the state on that. That is, the requirements are set by the state, we have to be, we are accountable to the state. So to suggest we have flexibility and who is or is not meeting the graduation rate isn't accurate, that is reported just like any other district reports their graduation rate and then that goes, it is built into the formula of school accountability across the district and across all districts in the state of Florida, Florida as well. So just wanted to provide the board and the viewing public, the, those here this evening, just the assurance that we meet the standards for graduation requirement. That's why we work so hard, literally at the individual student level, to address any deficiencies a student may have, to help them. And you'll notice that our graduation isn't 100% and, but I'll say yet because we hold on to the goal and the ambition to work with our kids to help everyone meet graduation. So, thank you.
Super, thank you for that clarification, Dr. Mullins. All right, that is going to move us into our consent agenda, Dr. Mullins.
There are 19 agenda items under the consent agenda.
Thank you. Does any board member wish to pull any item from the consent agenda? During Donald, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Moved by Ms. Campbell, seconded by Ms. McDougal. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0. Dr. Mullins, would you please let us know about the items under the action portion of tonight's agenda?
The first item is to approve the procurement solicitations.
Do I have a motion? Moved by Ms. McDougal, seconded by Ms. Campbell. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0. Dr. Mullins?
The next item is to approve department-school initiated agreements.
Do I have a motion? Moved by Ms. Binkin, seconded by Ms. McDougal. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0. We're now at board member reports and discussion points. Do we have any, anything that needs to be addressed? Mr. Sis...
So last week, the, microphone. Last time we were in here, we had, I put an agenda item onto the, you know, and I put it up for board discussion. And what ended up happening is we had individuals that came in to speak to that, that agenda item, and they were told that they had to speak at one minute, right? So instead of, you know, making an argument about it and doing everything else, I said I would just come back to it. And I said it at the board meeting that I'd come back today. So I did some research. I truly believed at that night that individuals who came to speak to the agenda item that I had put on there, that they would be able to speak for their three minutes. So, but I didn't want to argue it while we were here because I thought it was disrespectful because I had not looked it up. So basically, the definition of agenda items according to Robert's Rules of Orders both consider boarded, board reports under reports and new business. The definition of board, of agenda meeting is, an agenda is a chronological list of meeting activities beginning with the call of order and ending with adjournment. So every single Robert's Rules of Orders, every agenda definition that I looked at, considered anything that was inside of the agenda item to be able to be discussed as part of the agenda. Now, our policy speaks directly to anything that's on the agenda would give the three minutes, anything off the agenda would give one minute. One other note to make is that Dr. Mullins, at the last meeting prior to it, said there were two last-minute additions to the agenda, and then we voted to accept those to the agenda, according to what you said. agenda, according to what he said. So what I would like is Gibbs to give some more definition to it. Maybe now's not the appropriate time.
The policy actually does state that a proposition does not include items wherever found on the agenda upon which the board votes in its quasi-judicial capacity or under board discussion and information. The only exception being policy changes. So the policy is pretty explicit that board discussion items are not considered propositions for the, before the board for public comment.
Read that again, Mr. Gibbs.
A proposition does not include items wherever found on the agenda upon which the board votes in its quasi-judicial capacity or under board discussion and information. Policy changes appearing under information may be commented on as an agenda item.
Okay. So for port, so under the same definition, it says for purposes of this policy, a proposition is an item before the board for a vote and includes, is not necessarily limited to, all items on the agenda noted as unfinished business, consent and non-consent. So what I would argue is, is this, is that if there's something that comes up that we believe needs to have public comment and have some, we put it up for discussion, we discuss it, and if any of the public comes up. Now, let's layer it into what ended up happening. There's individuals from our bus drivers that came up here, they came to speak, and they were limited to one minute, right? They were trying to come to give us their plea towards what was about to happen in the vote. Tonight, we have to vote on something that we didn't have their, all of their public comment that night. But my argument, which I would like to bring to the next board, is that if we put something on the agenda for discussion for board topics, that if somebody wants to come in that can give that expert opinion, they would be able to do it. That's all. So we don't, I would like to talk that and put that as a discussion item, but if you guys don't want to do that, then we don't have to. What I'm trying to say is, is if I can get two other board members to say that that's part of discussion and we can move towards it and then possibly amend it to allow that, that's what I would like to do. So literally, if you put a board member says, we want to put it on for discussion, that people can come and give us their testimony on that.
Anyone wish to comment?
Sure. Gibbs took what I was going to say. I'll just add to that, that this policy is based, even though we can have some flexibility on it, the policy is based in statute, which says members of the public should be given a reasonable opportunity to be heard on a proposition before a board or commission. And I don't think we're just making up our own definition. The proposition is something that we're going to be voting on. And I understand, yes, we vote on the contract tonight, but we rustled through this policy, actually multiple times this fall, and came down to, I'm the one who asked for us to add that part about policy changes on the information agenda because we are going to be voting on them in future weeks. So I just, you know, the problem that I have with that is, you know, we can add up to the day of, up to the meeting of discussion items, and, you know, I want to talk about this. Well, then where do we, where do we put those people? You know, is it agenda or is it not agenda? Because I came up tonight and decided I want to talk about this. And so I, I think we need, we've set a standard, which is a pretty reasonable standard, it's in line with statute, and I think we just need to leave it the way we, the way we did. And I would just reiterate what we said last fall when we passed this policy, which is coming and speaking at the board meetings is not the only opportunity people have to get ahold of us, and it's probably not the most effective either. We have email, we have phone calls, we have other ways that people can meet with us personally if they'd like to, and I know that you, you did that as well. I just, I think we need to, we need to hold to the standard that we've created, which actually is, you know, we've actually opened up to be more specific as to what a proposition is, and I would prefer to leave it as it is.
Ms. Campbell, if I can respond? We have bus drivers that don't use their email so much. They don't have our phone numbers. They know that this is the place that they can come make that argument. And I would argue that if anybody, even Ms. Jenkins, Ms. Belford, Ms. McDougal, says that there's something they feel confident enough to bring forward to the board, that that discussion should have public comment, should not be limited down to a minute. And, you know, I truly believe in the process that if that's what it is. We had a group of people that showed up that tried to give their testimony, that thought they were going to get three minutes, and quite frankly, I didn't even think of it. Like, I didn't, I would have brought it up to you, Ms. Belford, I would have said something ahead of time. I didn't know that that would be something that would happen, but it did. And then we went and we voted on, we're voting tonight on a contract when we had people that were going against it that wanted to speak to it, and they didn't have any opportunity to do that except for the one minute, and they don't know that. So the thing is, is that I truly believe that if I put something on the agenda for discussion with you, and there's public testimony that somebody can come and give that is three minutes, I think that that needs to be added. And when you said that anybody can add it at the last minute, well, then at the last minute, people, if they want to come, they can come. But we're not talking about a massive amount of agenda items, and three minutes is an opportunity for them to speak to. It's hard to speak to three minutes or to one minute. It really is.
So, Mr. Susan, I would, I understand where you're coming from, and the thing that I would say is remember that, so like tonight, this was not listed as a discussion item on the agenda, right?
But I asked for it, right.
I know, I know. But it wasn't listed, so the public had no clue that there was going to be discussion on that, and that happens from time to time, right?
Sometimes we do that if we don't want the public discussion.
Or, and sometimes something that we come up with, like something happens during the meeting, and so we decide we need to have discussion at the end, right? I would say the thing about the discussion items is we can't take any action on those discussion items. And so all of the people who came last week, or two weeks ago, I guess, and spoke, could have spoken for three minutes tonight on the agenda item. Not that I'm saying they should have come back again. I think there was confusion, and please don't take this the wrong way, but I think they probably understood from you that they were going to have three minutes because you didn't under, you were confused about that portion of the policy.
I never told them to come and get their three minutes. They just came. And so to get the three minutes was there. I understand. I just, there was another piece, the, the opportunity inside the same policy, right under what Paul mentioned, the opportunity to be heard need not occur at the same meeting at which the board takes the official action, says it right there, on the proposition, if the opportunity occurs at a meeting that is during the decision-making process, and this is when with reasonable proximity in time before the meeting at which the board takes the official action. When I read that, that spoke to exactly the situation that we're doing tonight. It says that we knew we were going to take action, which we knew, we knew the vote was going to come. We put it, and I think that in cases of that and board discussion, I think we had something there. I truly believe, as I did when we were passing the, when we passed it, that I believe in having more of the public speaking, more of the people that come up, and I feel like if you put that on the agenda, that that gives the opportunity. But if I don't have board support to move forward, then that's what it is. But I truly believe that individuals should be able to come speak if a board member puts it on the agenda. That's all. If you guys don't, then we move on, but that was my spin.
Anyone else wish to, anyone want to support the proposition for Mr. Susan? Okay. I'm not hearing support, Mr. Susan, so doesn't mean we can't discuss it again in the future, but, you know, as we go along, if we need to massage, we certainly can look at that.
Yeah, and there's other avenues. There's other avenues to get the voice of them out, right? So we'll just use those avenues. That's all.
The policy does allow for a board member to move that evening, so if you wished for the public to have that opportunity, there is the flexibility built into the policy where you can make a movement, like you could have moved to have the board allow three minutes at that meeting.
There's going to be situations, you guys, when we come across this, and we're going to wish that we didn't do what we're doing. So that's it.
All right. Anything else as far as board discussion? Then, Dr. Mullins, do you have anything else to add?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
All right. That is then going to move us into our remaining speakers who signed up to comment on non-agenda items. Each speaker is limited to one minute. We have a clock in front of me to help you keep track of your time. When your time is over, you'll be asked to stop and allow the next speaker his or her turn. We'll hear from the speakers in the order in which they signed up, including those who may be waiting outside, although I think everyone has gotten moved in at this point. As stated earlier, reasonable decorum is expected at all times, and your statement should be directed to the board chair. Should audience participation interfere with speakers being heard or hearing me, I will be forced to clear the room. Keep in mind of the role of observer. When I call your name, please line up along the east wall of the boardroom to facilitate the smooth transition of speakers. Our first three speakers will be Sarah Marskey, Katie Delaney, and Michael Bloom.
It says 36 seconds.
Does it? I have one minute on my end. Does it say one now?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm Sarah. I wanted to address school board member behavior on and off the dais. Madam Chair, as you and your fellow board members are elected officials, I expect everyone to conduct themselves with dignity and integrity on and off the dais, including attending other government meetings. I expect my school board members to lead by example. That is serving every student with excellence as the standard by leading by example. I also wanted to share that, you know, it has been said that I signal in some way, shape, or form that it's okay to discriminate against anybody, and I, that could not be a more gross misrepresentation of my character. Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah. Katie?
So I wanted to speak on that as well, what Sarah was talking about. We're expected to hold a certain level of decorum in this room, yet board members are not being held to that same level of decorum. I was recently at another government meeting where a board member acted completely inappropriately in a room full of people. I would like to further go off of what Mr. Susan was talking about. I would request that we reopen the public comment policy. What is happening to these school bus drivers, it's not okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Katie. As Michael's approaching, the next three speakers will be Shelley Rodden, Bill McKay, and Simone Hector. Michael, when you're ready?
Good evening. I'm Michael Bloom. I'm a retired first responder. I've lived in Brevard County for over 15 years. I've advocated for at-risk youth for over 30 years, abused youth, unhoused youth, LGBTQ youth. I'm fortunate that many of them have kept in touch with me. You know what they remember from their childhood? They remember the words and actions of those charged with protecting them. They remember those who spoke up for them, those who spoke against them, and those who didn't speak for them at all. Our students are listening to the members of this board. They're listening to what you say with your words, your actions, and your votes. Most importantly, they're listening to the leadership this board's providing to the individual school administrators. 30 years from now, what will our students remember about the things you've said during your time on this board? Thank you.
Thanks, Michael. Shelley?
Good evening, Dr. Mullins, members of the board. My name is Shelley Rodden. I use she/her pronouns. I'm here tonight to speak about harassment and hate in Brevard schools, specifically Melbourne High School. Many students here tonight that'll tell you how awful things are. Two weeks ago, at this very school board meeting, two of the members sitting on the dais tonight voted against a nondiscrimination policy that includes protections for Brevard's LGBTQ students. This policy has been in place since July of 2016, and the two members that voted against it, despite knowing what happened at Melhive. This is appalling, and the message that this sends our LGBTQ students is that you do not matter. These brave students that are here tonight want what every student in Brevard and their families want. They want a safe, affirming school where they can go and learn and thrive in a safe environment. You will hear them.
Thank you, Shelley. We appreciate you joining us this evening. Bill McKay?
Good evening. My name is Bill McKay. I'm here representing the Space Coast Equality Coalition, Space Coast LGBTA Caucus, and the Space Coast Pride. I'm here in support of our students. I'm also here to keep it simple. This is about hate and discrimination. I take this seriously and personally. My community is under siege for many avenues. It didn't go unnoticed that at our last meeting here, nondiscrimination policies that have been in place since 2016 were not unanimously voted in. Thank you to the board members who voted them in. Let's be clear, these actions do not support our wink and nod to those that would do us harm. The incident at Melbourne High is where hate and discrimination begins. What this board says and does has repercussions. What this board says and does trickles down positively and negatively. We can do better. We must do better. Acceptance, inclusion, and love are always the answer. The LGBTQ rights are human rights.
Thank you, Bill. We appreciate you joining us this evening. If I could just remind our speakers to please keep your comments focused at me or the board as a whole and not, not single out board members, that would be much appreciated. Sorry, Simone, I didn't mean to stop you from, you can go ahead and move forward as I finish talking. Our next three speakers will be Sebastian Cook, Michelle Beavers, and then Beverly Marker. Simone?
Good evening, board members. My name is Simone Hector, and I am the vice president of Melbourne High School's Gay Straight Alliance. In my time as a member of this club, I have witnessed repetitive harassment towards my peers for the sole reason that they are queer. Our club poster, which advocated a safe space for LGBTQ youth, was destroyed and replaced with crude homophobic vandalism. The GSA's president posted about this incident and was met with hundreds of hateful comments, not only towards our club, but the LGBTQ community as a whole. The administration at Melbourne High School has told us that the hate speech we have received is our fault, and that we should get used to this sort of harassment because we have chose this lifestyle. LGBTQ students at Melbourne High School want the same as any other student, a place where we can exist without fear. Why is it that it is us who have to hide who we are, and why should our safety be compromised? Thank you.
Thanks, Simone. Sebastian?
Good evening. My name is Sebastian Cook, and I am the president of the Melbourne High School Gay Straight Alliance. As you may have heard, a bulletin board from our GSA spreading acceptance and love was maliciously destroyed and vandalized at Melbourne High School on February 8th, 2022, after being up for not even 24 hours. A cutout of Florida in the rainbow flag colors was ripped down, and the affirmation LGBTQ youth belong was reduced to youth belong. Gays are going to hell was written on the wall across from this. The next day, I posted about this hate crime on my Instagram, highlighting why we should be pushing for safer school environments, and I was met with over 600 comments, many of which are vile and cruel. I've been DM'd slurs, sent threats, and I no longer feel safe on campus because of the students behind these comments. I've been told by administration that this harassment is my fault because I chose this lifestyle, which is untrue. Please condemn this act of hatred, promise punishment to the greatest extent reasonable, for the perpetrators. Stop telling your LGBTQ students that it's their fault that they are being harassed, and hold Melbourne High School accountable. I matter, and I deserve to be seen and exist safely in school. Thank you.
Thank you, Sebastian. Hold your applause for me, please, audience. Audience, hold your applause, please.
I have some letters from other GSA board members that they wanted me to give to you guys. Would you mind if I?
Yeah, if you want to just leave them on the table there, we'll, we'll make sure that we get them. Thank you so much. Michelle Beavers?
I'm Michelle Beavers. I was here a couple of months ago, and I read an excerpt from a book, and I was silenced because that book was inappropriate. It was inappropriate material. I was not talking about a few curse words in a book. We're talking about a material that reaches adult-only level. I hope we'd all agree that kids reading detailed scenes about sex, rape, oral sex, sodomy, bestiality, and other subjects are inappropriate for any of our kids in our schools. The media specialist that I talked to for Brevard Schools told me that I would need to go to every single school and talk to every principal for any book that I want to have removed, or at least looked at to be removed because of what it contained. That doesn't seem like it's a very, very good way for me to try to go about trying to help get books that shouldn't be in schools out of a kid's hands. I think maybe we should look at a different way to do that. I was told because each school has their own culture, that some books might be appropriate for some high schools and not appropriate for others in elementaries and junior highs.
Thank you, Michelle. If you would please, please reach out to me so we can get some details on that, okay? As Beverly is approaching, the next three speakers will be Matthew Woodside, Nikki Fried, and Chelsea Harvainen. Sorry, I feel like I mess that up frequently. Beverly?
My name is Beverly Marker. I'm a recently retired attorney. Equal rights and equality are important to me. I've got a great granddaughter in the Brevard schools who's trans. Her safety is important to me. Because of things that are happening, not just in Brevard County, but in the state, when you're banning books, when you're passing laws and policies, where there are subjects that can't be brought up, and when you're telling teachers they're going to have to turn in someone that they suspect of being LGBTQ to their, to their parents, all you're doing is creating a climate of discrimination, hate, and violence. Everyone needs to be treated equally, and their health and safety has to be considered. Policies like this are not considering their safety.
Thank you, Beverly. Matthew? Matthew, hold your applause, please. Matthew?
Good evening. My name is Matthew Woodside, and I've been a teacher in Brevard Public Schools for the last 15 years because I love these kids, and I care about their safety and well-being, and I care about truth. And so, I'm here to shed light on an issue because, parents, you deserve to know the truth. At my school, boys identifying as girls are using the girls' restrooms daily, meaning it happened today. Girls identifying as boys have used the boys' restrooms this year, both while the opposite sex is present with them in the restroom. And I've heard reports from other teachers across the district that this is happening at their schools as well. Furthermore, students are told they can choose which locker room they prefer to change clothes in. And, parents, you have no idea when this happens. No emails, no emails, emails are sent, no phone calls made, and that's BPS policy. And when teachers like myself refuse to follow this unsafe and unethical directive, we're given official notices on BPS letterhead like this one that states, "If I prevent students from using restrooms or locker rooms of the opposite biological sex, I can face disciplinary action." So be it. Parents, you deserve to know what's going on in your child's school, and you are the key to the change we need. It's time for you to make your voices heard, to your school administrators, to these board members, our legislators, and the SCA.
Thank you, Matthew. We appreciate you joining us this evening.
Because we need policies that will actually protect all of our students.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Hold your applause, please. Nikki? No, Nikki? Okay. Chelsea?
All right. I just want to say hello. I love all the rainbows. It's God's symbol, and I love that he's here in our room, in our presence for today. I just want to drop some history relevant in the world that went on in 1960s. Communist China infiltrated their education systems, and it trickled over for 10 years, creating an army, kind of looks like your uniform now, and they would attack just citizens trying to get rid of old culture. And you can do your research, it's called the Cultural Revolutions, and it's happening here in Brevard. And I just want you to know that Salty Army sees you, Infowarriors see you, and we know that George Soros money is here. And we call on Governor DeSantis to pass legislation to be able to recall school board members, and I pray that he does so, so we can get, you know, people not following the law out of office, or, because you guys are public servants, so we should be able to recall you. Pray that happens.
Thanks, Chelsea. Have a great night. All right, that concludes our audience. If you would please be quiet. All right, that concludes our public speaking.